We have to... On the regions. I believe it's to...
We just ask anybody at home to just mute your mics if you already don't have them muted until you need to speak and then we'll, we can turn it back on.
So good to be back personally with everyone and also to have this new technology where we are able to remote participation from residents in the community. Okay, first we have the horse, citizen statements and conditions. Okay, correspondence, consider operating, thank you, this parish, please sign that.
I move to authorize, say, here, we stretch the place signs advertising trees of hope, sorry, trees for hope at North Ave and Route 16, Mill Mill Road and Route 16 and Providence Street and Hartford Ave East.
Second. Discussion, this is a annual request and I've never seen an issue. Pass the place, so. Um, David?
Kenny, all, so. Just bring your eyes.
You do not need to do well call.
Aye.
I know.
Should we just do it anyway?
Consider chapter ninety project request, Daniels Road or Blackstone Street.
Move to approve the chapter ninety project request for Daniels Road in the amount of sixty eight thousand five hundred fifty-two and Blackstone Street in the amount of hundred sixty-two thousand three hundred sixty.
Second. Discussion, Alan, do you want to talk about these projects or?
All just projects that I feel should be done in the best interest of the town and would be a good thing.
So is that Blackstone Street finishing the other half that was?
Yes, correct.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're getting back on this very. All right, and.
You got to jump in the five. Jump to seven, interview appointed candidate to cultural council.
I think we have Sandy here.
Sandy is here, oh Sandy is on screen. Sandy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Great, so would you like to tell us a little bit of why you are interested in serving on the cultural council?
Yes, I would like to become a member of the cultural council.
You want to tell us a little bit of why you'd like to serve?
Um, I've always been interested in cultural events and I also feel that with, with all of the disharmony in the world today, that cultural events are a key to building bridges and having people get to know each other and that through cultural events, we see that everybody's really exactly the same and that they can really help bring a community together. Because when you just look around the world, every culture kind of seems to have a lot of similarities in their traditions and things that they do.
Great, Mike, do you have any questions with Sandy?
I, all I can say is I appreciate, I think we all appreciate you being able to step up and participate in this and actually be a member of the cultural council, I think it's great.
Correct. Mike, you want to make the motion?
Sure, I move to appoint Sandy to travel into the current cultural council for term to expire June thirty of twenty twenty.
Second. On, do you have any questions, Sandy?
I do not, thank you for volunteering, Sandy.
Thank you.
Um, David?
Aye.
Thank you, Sandy.
Have a great night.
Um, let's see. We discuss the item as well for an election project. It does be a hundred minute.
Yeah, I hope, so, just, Ellen's on here, just as far as the, it would be more or less so the process will be forward because it was only designated, I believe, in the division of how to do it this year. So what is the subsequent years going to do, is that something that is just chosen by the clerk or is it just part, was it starting?
The way it was explained to me was that, you know, right now there's, there's one three-year term expires each year, right? Now, for this next election coming up, there's going to be, the three-year term will be, will be voted, there'll also be a one and a two-year term. And then the following year, you know, the, in other words, this year it'll be Mark and then the two new terms, the next year it'll be you and the one-year term.
Yep.
Right, but then it'll be a three-year, and it's three-year terms.
The votes, the voter, that weird tabulation way to try to put through it and one of the other petitions a while back where the top vote getter gets the three years for after second.
No, that's not how this works.
Is that what it said?
No, it said, the way it works is there's a, it actually added a one-year term and a two-year term, so in other words.
So you're gonna pull papers?
We're gonna pull papers for the one-year term for the seat.
The three people could, correct. I don't know if that's how it's written.
I asked Ellen this about a month ago and she said it was one question on the ballot and you voted for multiple people in the, in the one ballot and then determine other number.
Vote getter, second.
Gets the first and then the second and the third, because I also asked her what happens if they vote for more and she said than that.
It becomes invalid.
It becomes invalid, so it's, it's not multiple, it's one.
You talked to her about this?
I talked to her about it, what, two, three weeks ago? Right, because we had questions, that's my resident.
That's like saying there's only one seat and then.
Right, so this, this is.
That was the issue, I know, I know, is that's definitely the way it was worded the first time, I didn't, well, you know, the issue is, she's, she's on my case here, so.
We need to clarify, I think.
Yeah, absolutely, right, so can we just put it on the next, can we just put a placeholder on the one, if we have to make any adjustments so that the election does, does go through?
Yeah, because the what's, what?
I'm looking, I trust you, I don't have to say the first one.
I'm basically the worst case scenario, the worst case scenario in which we have, we've handled it wrong in May and I'm sure Ellen will do it correctly whichever which way it is, but I want to be certain that we know what that is and that we're able to tell people ahead of time what that is.
Right, because people are gonna pull papers, they're pulling for individual seats or pulling for, just pull in, in the top three.
Right, because what if someone says they're interested in like one year, but they're not interested in three years or something, like can they actually pick an individual?
Right, that's true.
Well, Cindy must know.
Can Laura, Laura, do you have, I think you have the language of that, some?
This, the one we just did or the one?
Yeah.
I think I might have it too, so I'll see if I have.
Wait, why don't we do number fourteen, consider appointment conservation agent?
Oh, yeah.
Just keep going, just. Want to talk about that?
I do, that's, that's very, well, I mean, it's, it's a quick conversation. You know, we have been searching for someone from, we had an administrative assistant for conservation previously. We have been in need of an agent for a couple of years now, that's been apparent, and so we advertised, we had someone in place, we're gonna regionalize with someone else, that fell through, so we advertised again. I was able to get five finalists, we did interviews, we had two finalists that did the interviews with Jack Hunter, the planner. We had one candidate that we both agreed on, which is the one I'm recommending tonight, Alicia Nikozzi, she has a master's degree, she has previous work as a park ranger, she has no, she's not certified yet as a conservation agent, but she's actually taking the first course tonight as we're here. She's just recently moved back to the area as her background in biology and so she, we've talked a bit about potentially her learning this trade and then me helping her maybe regionalize with other towns too, because there's a need for agents out there, we didn't get one actual agent to apply, so. I'm very excited, so I made her an offer, which is, which we advertised at thirty-one dollars, but I made her an offer of thirty dollars conditional upon her certification, she'll get thirty-one. And she'll work ten hours a week, some of it in the office, we're talking about when that would make the most sense, some of it remote, and she'll go to conservation meetings either virtually or in person, she's already been.
I take one of the biggest pieces too, don't, don't forget there, isn't that ten hours, it's like, it's because that's what was being, I guess it was a lot of this.
Right, and she's already in contact with the, the conservation chair and I spoke to him before we made the final selection, so. Well, she was here today. Very long. Yeah, very enthusiastic, a lot of energy.
I can't wait, that's a point, I move to appoint Alicia Nikozzi to part-time conservation agent, ten hours per week and an hour and thirty dollars upon completion certificate as conservation agent, there will be a one dollar per hour increase.
Second. All favor?
Kenny, your eyes.
Since you said a morally eye, real eye.
So. You want to jam in the moment we're going, real quick?
Is there any update on the last one?
I got it, I got it.
I'm sorry.
So, that's okay, it says, the candidate receiving the highest number of votes shall, shall serve a three-year term, the candidate receiving the second highest number of votes shall serve a two-year term, and the candidate receiving the third highest number of votes shall serve a one-year term. Thereafter, as the terms of the select board expire, successors shall be elected for terms of three years.
That's it.
That's one question.
Yeah, it's just one.
They're, whoever's running is, they're all running against.
Right.
Not like one-year term, it was two-year.
You just make it three, three-year terms, just be calm.
I think we should have also put something in there about how the chairman is selected, if you're gonna have more than five.
It's not voted, it's not voted by the members of the board?
Well, it is now, but I mean. I don't know, I would, I would just like clarification, if you can, if you bring it on, I just, I want to be certain that we are locked, loaded.
Does, do we, do we want to discuss this in the study time meetings as, as maybe not this process or do we, what do we?
I think three times in front of everybody and townspeople voted it, so I think if we need to.
How that was jammed in the stroke at the last meeting.
If, but if, if there needs to be some kind of edit to it.
I think we should be safe and put a placeholder on and just have Ellen clarify the exact process this year and maybe the years going forward.
Like so, from that town meeting for what?
For there has.
Remote it?
No, so we have to add additional clarification to the vote.
Or just have the, the selection is done, whatever, you know what, it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't really matter, I guess at the end of the day.
But.
I mean, because.
I mean, we don't go anything that way.
Right, well, because if, I mean, to Mike's point before, I mean, it makes more sense for people to be running for an individual spot on a board rather than at large for a board.
That, I will, I will admit, my understanding was that you would pull papers for the three-year, the two-year.
Well, that's how we do it, right.
That's, make specific individual positions on.
We want to change that so that that's what happens as opposed to.
I would agree with that.
Question, I, I think, can, can we just, can we just change that without taking a town meeting vote, can we do that?
I want to look at the town meeting voting, but if the town meeting vote like Laura just read says we're going from three to five and here's how we're getting there, you would have to have a town meeting vote to change that.
So actually, it's only for that first time, because after the first time.
It's who's episode.
We've got the one-year term as far as the three-year term you're running for that term.
I mean, maybe the only time.
So this is only for the first time.
Yep.
Maybe I've thought about it too much and the fact this, like, you know, if I was gonna try to convince Mark to run again and stay on the board and come back, maybe he's not willing to stay on for three years, but maybe he's willing to run for the one-year spot, right? Something like that for the transition sake, and I think that will bring more people out of the woodwork if they're, if they're like, well, I'll try it for a year and if I don't like it, then I don't have to continue. I, I mean, I'm worried about having everybody on the same ballot and then just checking the boxes and people checking, I don't know, just.
Yeah, pick three, I mean, we don't want like that, no, you're right.
No, there should be individuals.
That's my argument, it should be.
Stuff is down.
You pull papers.
It wasn't citizen petition, we couldn't change it. Right, so we.
It was a citizen petition and you have to put it on, you had to put it on the warrant just as it was presented to you and it could only be voted.
Right, so let's agree.
Put a place over that, that always has.
It'd feel a lot better.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
Language.
So, what was that number? I moved open the public hearing for National Grid poll relocation, poll nine at seventeen George Street.
Right.
The discussion is in form of the requirements of national law, chapter one sixty-six, section twenty-two, the men and select board hereby give notice that it will hold a public hearing September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, six forty-five P M. In the town hall, upper meeting room twenty eighth, you've been entered to consider the request of Massachusetts Land Company, End Grid, relocate poll nine from seventeen George Street to, to seven. Seven inches?
Seven feet.
Seven feet offside of road on town property, all listed parties will be given an opportunity to be there.
Turning from.
Which state, take the.
Oh, right. All favor?
Aye.
All right. You need to do a few national grid.
Michael Parent is supposed to be here, maybe he's right, top left-hand corner.
Hi, Michael, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening.
Is it seven inches or seven feet?
It's seven feet.
Okay, would you like to just, so it's seven feet, right, for the poll movement?
Uh, I, I don't think, this looks like it's a possible new poll install on town property. Uh, it's to alleviate a safety issue to the house that the service goes to left side where a pool is right now and we want to, they want to move it to the right side. Of the house to get it out of the way and the petition is to install a new poll, nine dash one on public property on that right-hand side, so the service can come from poll nine to poll nine dash one to the house.
Because we have to. Okay. Didn't see anyone.
All right, this, this is. Okay, um, are there any residents here? All right. Any further questions?
I'm proposing public hearing for National Grid poll relocation, poll nine, seventeen George Street.
Second. Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move to approve the National Grid poll petition to relocate poll nine, seventeen George Street to seven feet off the side of the road on town property.
Second. So, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all set, Michael, thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
Next, Michael. End minutes. Oh, so, what team do you? Consider multiple grounds at ninety-one Millville.
Oh, yeah.
This is something.
Yeah, they sent, they sent over an email, so they're getting ready to build a house, to burn, getting ready to build a house of the, the two children, so they say they've separated the lot into two separate lots, right now there's a dwelling on the house that one of the sons is living in. While they start to build the first house, they're probably gonna start building both the houses, they would just like continue living in the existing dwelling, it doesn't interfere with any of the construction project that works located, and as soon as the houses are able to move in, they're going to raise that, that building again enough that where they might have gone through the demolition delay with historical as well as. So, this will just allow them to have a second meeting, original house stay while they build it.
So, is there a timeline?
Generally, in the past, I remember approving these for one year at a time, but they needed an extension to come back in, however, I think one went twenty years.
Yeah, that's not.
I don't, key intention is not that in this case, it'll only be the house.
Yeah, right.
Um, so, yeah, I think that, and this is something where you'll stand, you'll stand regularly done, so. The expectation is they, they're ecstatic to get into their new homes, so I don't expect it to be.
What I remember is that the last time we had one of these votes, we put a timeframe on it and then requested that they come back before the board.
Sure.
If once that, if they need more time.
One year, do you want to do one year, two year?
I do, one year at a time.
I would expect that they're, they're getting started now, if they're stated, so, that they might be even raising that house by springtime. But as long as the weather is good enough to work through the winter.
Accept the motion.
And what do you want with them?
I, I move to issue a temporary permit to allow the use of the existing house at ninety-one Millville Road, Noble Street for a period of ten months, exceed twelve months.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Next.
He's still.
Still in turn.
That one, right. Oh, what about, unless, is it, you think twelve is a huge discussion?
Oh, yeah, I'll do that.
Um, that was another one we had, I think, so.
Yes, I was asking. Making me a little longer, I think, last year, I talked with Alan and some residents about Kinsey Lane and Oxford Road, is it Oxford Road Extension, is it? So the, you don't know what that is, that, that, that's, I'd say, I'd say that this side of Kitchen, this side of. Right, so, not that these roads are accepted by the town, so, two things here is, one, we would like to put them on the, on a meeting at some point, two, get them accepted, but in the meantime, oh, before that, we'd like to, Alan would like to approve them before we bring it in for the town meeting. They're semi-fire roads, I guess you would call them, yeah, they haven't, they haven't been accepted by the town, but the town is always maintaining, they're just at a point of pretty ditch repair right now, we need, there's a few things needed, and if we take a couple of rounds to, to put some money into them, then accept them as town roads, I think it would be better.
Do we allow either of those?
Both. That's part of the thing, we, it's, it's, I'll take care of this sometime, clown. Oh, no, I, I've driven. I used to drive on the equipment. So, I mean, it's to our advantage to fix them.
Yeah, it's not like these were subdivisions that were abandoned, some of them, these have been in the community for ever, forever and Kinsey Lane just wanted to, they never wanted it to be accepted.
And especially Kinsey Lane, you have town hiking trails on the other end that people try to access, so do you have like, you have an idea of what it costs to go to?
I'm talking like fifty thousand.
And again, you keep, keep, oh, yeah.
Will they be perfect? No, but fifty thousand will get us.
Two rounds of fifty thousand, are you saying, right? We're talking fifty thousand now and then possibly another fifty thousand in any time, so, a total of a hundred. It, it just sort of a clear, I don't want it to get mis-screwed to the annual and we come and ask to do the next phase of this in the spring, then we're now asking for another fifty thousand, the expectation, we probably spend a hundred, you know, give or take, you know, ten thousand.
We do what I think to do, right.
Yeah, I agree.
So, the reason we can't use chapter ninety is because they're not accepted.
Correct.
So, why wouldn't we accept the road and then use chapter ninety?
I suppose we could, if, if something done before, just. Right away.
Do you, do you do it in October?
No, after the pressure.
After. I would probably do it in.
So you're doing it in spring?
With, with what's going on with public bid and everything else, I'm having a real hard time getting work on this stuff. But it's, it's very, and. I think that next spring would be my target date to try to get something done.
So if we accept the roads in November?
I don't think you can accept them, I don't think you can accept them without doing some kind of surveying or something, I don't know how you.
I think that the, the idea was to not accept them now, bring them, get the, get the work done on them, then do whatever survey needs to be done to then, maybe not, not even this year, it will be the following, except.
The only reason I brought that up is because the limitations on chapter ninety, so I was thinking, well, we can get them accepted sooner and then use chapter ninety instead of using our free cash or whatever methods we're gonna have to come up.
Well, right, what's the, what's the deterioration possibility between now and next year for using chapter ninety if we accept the road?
If there's some sort of work needs to be done, bring them up to a certain standard, right?
Yes.
That's.
Have they been laid out? Has a roadway been laid out under?
No. That's what I'm saying, I've tried in the past to get this accepted years ago, and I believe there needs to be some kind of, there needs to be a legal description. and I believe there needs to be some kind of, there needs to be a legal description, at least.
There would meet and bound in one.
Needs to be a legal description, at least so that the town knows what we're accepting, and the residents know what is theirs and what is the town's.
Yeah, I think they should, I mean, I think if, I mean, if we're, it would be, it seems like it would make more sense to accept, survey the road, accept the road, spend the money on the road. Um, I understand the timeframe, but if they're not accepted roads.
Okay, so, I mean, why don't we do this? Why don't we do this?
What if we?
Let's, let's, let's ask for a hundred to do the survey for the road acceptance at the same time, let's work on them as well, use, use whatever you need to do to get that first round done, we'll know more by then for the annual, we're gonna need a little bit more, but stop the survey process now because it's going to be over the winter time. I mean, if, we can't push this off any further, these people have just been pushed down the road every time we look.
But I'm afraid that if we start to do repairs and potentially things that the survey turnout cannot actually be the town, we might have a problem.
We do this survey first and.
Right.
Clearly, we're, we're following the road now, so you need to do whatever to.
So, yeah, I think.
Need it so you can do it without the truck falling off.
Yes, we put the article on.
Yes.
For the road, right, which isn't necessarily, so we can put survey and repair.
I mean, the initial part too, is I think mainly that entrance to these roads are what is, is a culprit at the, when you first come on to Kinsey Lane, that's just, you think, well, the, the, the people that live there are going and getting their own materials and repairing, throwing, it's taking.
No, right, we should do the right.
So, basically, what we should do then is put an article on to provide funding, to prepare this, these two roads to be accepted in, in this, at the annual town meeting, and that way opens up chapter ninety funding.
For future repairs.
So, when are we gonna put down? Well, we can, we can, we can.
Right.
Yeah, I also have to understand that you're not gonna get a lot more chapter ninety when to fix that road, and the chapter ninety when they would be using now is to fix the roads that currently are accepted. I think the best thing to do, this is just my opinion, I think the best thing to do is to put like fifty thousand in there to repair the road, 'cause you're not, you're not gonna get that engineered or surveyed by annual town meeting, that ain't gonna happen, there's no way. I don't see if we're gonna get it done in two years.
So, what, so what we, hold on, did I miss, did I miss the whole point here? Where, so we're gonna put, we're gonna put an article, repair and prepare to get those roads, so we're gonna put money in there, we're talking about a, survey and repair.
Yeah.
Right.
So, we're gonna just, we're gonna get the survey process at least going while we're repaired.
Okay.
Alright?
Yeah.
Are we, okay, cool.
Okay, we have our seven of our public hearing. Some motions over.
Uh, listen, the seven?
Six.
Six. Uh, move to open public hearing for the alteration premise for an existing annual general on-premise all alcohol beverage license and amending an existing adult entertainment license for Showtime Entertainment LLC, George Fenari, forty-nine Milford Street, Men in Mass, zero one seven five six.
Second.
The President's Select Board will hold a public hearing in the upper town hall, twenty Main Street, Men in Mass, on twenty eighth day of the month September twenty twenty-one at seven P M. To consider the application for the alteration of premise for an existing annual general on-premise all alcohol beverage license and amending an existing adult entertainment license for Showtime Entertainment LLC, George Fenari, forty-nine Milford Street, Men in Mass, zero one seven five six, under Master of the law, chapter one thirty, section twelve, all of which is prior to giving the opportunity to be heard.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, Jerry, come on.
Thank you. My name is Tom Lester, I'm here with Michael Alio and Dale McKinnon, the engineers here also. In case you'd like to hear who I am.
Thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to be here and address you. And as you're aware, Showtime Entertainment currently holds an adult entertainment license that was issued by this board, and it was issued by this board under generalized chapter one forty, section one eighty-three A, and it permits it to operate an adult entertainment establishment at forty-nine Milford Street in London, Massachusetts. My clients own that land, and somewhat to their surprise, many years ago, zoned for adult entertainment as one of four parcels, amended by town meeting. Now, with regard to the issuance of the entertainment license, um, I remember that meeting when it was issued, and I'm not sure that anyone affirmatively wanted to grant Showtime that entertainment license at all, honestly, but the board had consulted town council to explain that the statute in question, one forty, one eighty-three A, isn't discretionary. It states that the licensing authority shall, and I emphasize the word shall, grant the license under this section unless they find that the license taken alone or in combination with other license activities on the premises would adversely affect the public health, safety, or order in the concert, dance, exhibition, cabaret, or public show cannot be conducted in a manner that is to protect employees, patrons, and members of the public, preventing unreasonable increase in noise, preventing or preventing reasonable increase in the level of pedestrian, vehicular traffic. Uh, the board found that the entertainment indeed could be conducted in a manner which complied with the statute, which protected the employees, patrons, and members of the public from criminal activity or health fire, safety hazards, that it could be conducted in a manner that prevented non-reasonable increase in the level of noise and prevented an unreasonable increase in the level of pedestrian, vehicular traffic. And to protect the neighborhood, the board put along a list of conditions on the license to protect the neighbors. Now, we're back tonight for three changes, and we're also back with a major change to the plan, which in our opinion is going to much better protect the impact of the club on the neighbors. And that change is the applicant is only going to allow valet parking. That means that someone going to the club will pull up in front of the club, enter the club, then a valet will park the car in the back, so no feature to the club will ever go to the back of the club. The back of the club borders on residential neighborhood after some wetlands, and that was a major complaint the first time around, granted the license, the license was in fact granted despite that complaint, but it was a major issue, which was the noise impact on the neighbors, the residential neighbors. So, now we're, we're going to only allow valet parking. That means that no one but attendants hired by the club will be in the parking area at any time in the back of the club. Um, the three changes we're requesting are condition, are, to conditions which were part of Showtime's originally adult entertainment license, but were found to be unconstitutional. I mean, as I think some of you may recall, this went through extensive litigation of up to the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, and in federal court, it went up to the First Circuit Court of Appeals, eventually, all those, three or several of those conditions were found to be unconstitutional after very, very costly litigation, which, because men didn't prevail, it ended up paying both sides of, of the bill on that. Those were conditions, number one, that the building not be larger than two thousand square feet or taller than fourteen feet high, number two, not operate before four thirty P M, and number three, that it not serve alcohol. Well, the, the issue of alcohol has already been resolved in the sense that this board granted an alcohol license after the Supreme Judicial Court found that was an unconstitutional uh, condition. Dale McKinnon has prepared, prepared new design and site plans. We've been to the planning board for site plan approval, we've been to the Men and Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit, and we've been to the Men and Conservation Commission for approval under the West Dance Act. Each one of those boards reviewed the site plan, new site plans, they approved this design and site plans after extensive hearings before all of those boards, except perhaps the Board of Appeals only in one hearing, and the Conservation Commission, but a number of hearings, and certainly the planning board had a number of hearings. Those are all approved, so now we're positioned to come to you asking that we be able to increase the size from two thousand square feet with seventy-four seats to a forty-eight-hundred square feet establishment with a hundred and sixty-five, um, patrons.
Um, is that, is that, is, are we a stop necessary?
I'm sorry.
I mean, are we a stop necessary on, on that item alone? Because we're, if it's already been ruled unconstitutional by the bylaws that we put in place, then site, site plan review should be what, what jurisdiction, is that the jurisdiction of the fair?
Well, one of the conditions unfortunately was that it have no more than two thousand square feet or half, and.
So, you can strike the condition.
You can strike that condition.
It is up to us.
Well, if it's unconstitutional, again, it's not, right?
It was, right, that was something that was deemed constitutional.
No, that was deemed, two thousand square feet of lymph was deemed unconstitutional.
Okay.
What's appropriate is sort of for you as a board to decide whether or not the increase to forty-eight-hundred square feet would adversely, would, would adversely, um, cause disruptive conduct or criminal activity or health, fire, safety, or fire hazards. Clearly, it wouldn't be because you, you put on conditions to protect the town from that.
Well, can I ask exactly what was the planning board approval?
The planning board approval was for site plan review.
Of the size of building that you're coming to ask us?
Yeah.
Is that, so the only thing they approved was the size of the, what was the site plan? None of these other issues are.
Sorry, I see, sorry.
The, the site plan and, and, and fire trucks, and whether, whether it was appropriate for fire trucks, and whether or not the parking was appropriate.
Did the, it, was the issue of, of, of traffic ever addressed in the plan?
The issue of traffic was addressed with a, with a study which was conducted long ago for a sixty-eight-hundred square foot building, which showed that there was no impact on traffic from that large building. Traffic wasn't issued before the planning.
How many years was that?
That was about ten years.
Yeah.
The original.
Yeah, in addition to that, what, what were the number of patrons at that time?
Sixty-eight-hundred square feet? Sixty-eight-hundred square feet.
What were the number of patrons?
Two hundred and fifty, three hundred patrons.
So, they did a traffic study ten years ago, assuming there's gonna be two hundred and fifty patrons at sixty square feet.
Sixty-eight-hundred square feet, right. And they found that there was no impact on traffic, and the major reason was that there's the most traffic on the highway is during traditional rush hour times, and that most patrons who go to, clubs go after, at E P M or after E P M, when there's less traffic on the road, so there was zero impact on the road.
And, and I'm just wondering, did you do any kind of traffic study or anything to see if opening, opening your place up at E P M instead of four P M, had any impact on any of that at all?
Yes, the traffic, the traffic study showed that it would not.
Well, frankly, you know, ten years ago, ten years ago, we didn't have as much traffic as we do now. There's a, an Amazon, uh, parking lot that's on at sixteen now that's increased traffic. Uh, there's potentially additional development that's gonna be coming up here, uh, perhaps from, oh, at the, at the driving range shortly, there's, there's conversations and works there. Ten years ago, it's, it's very different, and so that, that does raise a red flag for me in terms of traffic safety. And I should just say my background is accurate, we can't charge in traffic, and I do have a concern with increasing the, the numbers and square footage, that it might, it might have an issue with traffic, and I, a long time ago, used to direct traffic out across from that location on the street, dangerous then, so I'm wondering if, if it's an issue for you to do another traffic study with the current proposed numbers of patrons, the parking, the times, and, and if, if that would be something you could do, would be willing to do?
Well, uh, the situation is that, in, in fact, we obviously could have the right to open a restaurant on those premises that would be forty-eight-hundred square feet with a hundred and seventy-five patrons, and I don't think that singling out this type of entertainment is appropriate for that.
Well, I'm not, and again, it has nothing to do with the, the type of entertainment, it's just the increased traffic.
That's a belief, yes, but I guess what I'm saying is, has a right, we'd be able to open up without any traffic study, if, you know, I'm gonna go to a restaurant, so I don't think we should be.
And I, and you know what, I, I don't know if that's the case or not, we need it, I'm trying to.
Only because you're almost doubling the size of the original request. I mean, I think any variation on the initial request would have some impact.
Changing hours, hours of operation, for people's footage of the building, and now, and now you're having, it is, it's great that they're, you know, you're gonna have everybody driving on the back.
Right.
It, it's a ten-year-old study, I'm just, I'm concerned about it, and I don't, I don't think it's unreasonable, I'm asking if you'd be willing to do that. I don't know how long it'll take. Yeah, I think, the point, I think that's being made is too, that if there was concern at that time to do a traffic study ten years ago, there should be even more concern about traffic, ten years, since it's present, because there has been a drastic increase in the traffic, and so it is a safety issue. We've had, um, considerable concerns about driving this traffic and the need for improving safety there, we've taken measures there where we can, and so it's important, no matter what the business is, that traffic is being addressed appropriately, and so that's why we're raising it, um, we had mentioned in ten years ago. And I, I don't, and one more question, and I honestly, I don't know this, I don't have, look, see the site plan, but how many parking spaces are there behind that building?
Oh, there are al- almost twenty more that are required by your zone.
Twenty more based on the size of the, the new size?
The number of patrons, yes.
I would just like to add, so.
And that was part of, that was certainly part of an issue, the site plan review.
Yeah.
We, we well exceeded what is required for an establishment of this nature.
And are there any additional curve cuts?
Uh, that's what I wanna talk about, so, MASTA is actually planning a significant overhaul of the road from right at the bottom of the hill there all the way through to Hartford Avenue East, so I think they're gonna be potentially adding a turning lane, and there're gonna be some changes, so I think, even just in the process of this, talking about the traffic study, I think they're gonna be adding a sidewalk there too, I think it would be, to your benefit actually, to maybe coordinate with MASTA about where they're putting the lanes in there and where the walk, they're putting that sidewalk on that side too, six feet or ten foot, right down all the way to the bottom of the hill, so.
From all the hill?
They, no, from, from our side, all the way down from the hill, from the top of North Ave, all the way down to the bottom.
Just to the bottom of the hill, or they hope to?
Well, right now, they're stopping, but they're, the plan is to continue onto the line, so, in this initial phase, it, it goes from that, right there, to Hartford Avenue East, that section, and there's some new lights that have been installed, some new turning lanes, and so, just, that might help with the traffic flow situation.
There, there, there will be no change in the exit, the entrance.
Right, but it might help with the flow concerns.
So, I think the existing opening is what would be utilized going forward?
Yes, more, it's more than sufficient in terms of, in terms of being able to see it in both directions. Well, if necessary, obviously, we'll, we'll do it, we'll do a traffic study, but the traffic that we're talking about is traffic that will happen at night, well after the peak hours, which are morning. well after the peak hours, which are morning and evening from 4:00 to 6:00. So to the extent that there are those hours.
In the summer though, we have the drive-in, we have the end zone that are, have extensive traffic at night. And so you have a very condensed area that has a lot of traffic. And so as time's gone on, again, 10 years, things have changed. It's a very busy area, and that is a safety concern.
Well, certainly the drive-in was there at that point in time, as was the bar, which was, you know, actually giving much more business in the present time. I'm sure that a traffic study is going to have to say that there's going to be no negative impact on the road, that the peak hours are not the hours of operation that will be happening at this club.
And that would be ideal, right? So I read in the decision that your timeframe is two years. So would obtaining this traffic study significantly delay that? I mean, this seems like it could be a pretty quick turnaround, right?
We're certainly trying to do it as soon as we can.
It shouldn't actually put you off your target dates, right?
We'd like to, you know, move it forward.
And I'll forward the Mastha materials that I have, that'll help too.
Appreciate that.
Take a look at that and see the plan that's still there. It's not finalized, I don't think, but you can see the drafts.
Yeah, and we can't, as a rule, you can't do a traffic study based on potential development in the future. We all would agree with that, just not allowed as a traffic.
So if you put the idea of the current traffic count and then what the estimate of how many vehicles at certain times, when you have going, when you're going from 74 to 165 people, with the increase of the traffic and the people that turn in at different times, and that's all I'm interested in finding out.
We can do that, I'm sure it's going to be given at 75 cars and it's, you know, 40, 45. That's assuming that every place is filled in the establishment. That would be 40 more cars on a highway with a chance, you know, a huge number of people passing on. It's not like it's a quiet street.
I was just going to move to postpone, sorry, do you postpone it?
Two.
When do we continue?
Yeah, can take some, take this one.
We continue it to allow us to provide you with a traffic study showing.
Is two weeks sufficient, or do you want to go forward?
I'm afraid that two weeks are a reward.
I'll also add that I might have numbers from Mastha. They provide us with some traffic com numbers when they.
That'd be wonderful.
Not sure how old they are.
Why don't we say two months, and we could bring it back earlier if necessary.
We need to pick a date.
Cindy has a comment.
I was questioning whether there was any traffic information, any generative traffic issues concerned, or any special.
This is just the old studies for the boards that raised that issue.
Yeah, look, I'm like, nobody's supportive of this business coming into town. I'll truthfully say that I don't. I personally would think that this is just futile. But because we can, I guess we will, but there's no, we don't do this to any other business at this level, it's always done at site point of view, so.
Well, but they didn't even ask that question, I think that's.
They brought.
Well, they did, they did ask the question, and we indicated, we went to the study, and I can, you know, pull the study up for you too, and.
But I understand that you have the study from 10 years ago. That's 10 years to me, there's been a lot of changes. And so my reaction is, that's an old study.
But the number of people who are going to the club and could dig it out, that hasn't changed.
Well, it is.
Well, it is, you're increasing. Exactly, it actually decreased off what we.
Oh, the original, the original site plan.
Correct, right. And look, I said, I'm not, I don't really have a fight against.
Okay, I get that, but the traffic on 16 would have increased around the day. And looking at those numbers will be different in my mind. So I'd like to see that done, and then if there is a negligible difference, then we're good. But I'd like to be comfortable in knowing that we're not going to see a major impact safe in that section of 16.
And maybe the traffic center would come up with some mitigation, if there is an effect, there's something we can do to minimize.
Which is really what we're, I'm talking about.
Yeah, from a traffic point of view, actually, the greater the number of cars on the road at the present time, the less impact these cars will have on it in terms of going from a C to an F, for example. Actually, if the number of cars had dramatically gone down and you were increasing the number of cars, maybe it would have an effect. But we're going to do the traffic study, we're going to get you something. We're going to show that the numbers of cars is incremental.
Okay.
And you require us to do that, you know?
Appreciate it.
And two of you are requiring us to do that, so we're going to do that.
Well, I really appreciate it, appreciate it. It is important for me, a big amendment, knowing how important traffic safety is to residents on 16. I know that that's something that is of concern to the community. So I appreciate your willingness to do that, moving forward.
And I would note that actually, the obligation is not an off of this, okay? It shall issue unless it appears there will be an unuseful increase. And there's no facts indicating that at the present time. But we're going to get a study done.
That's what I am.
And we're going to get back to you, and we're going to take care of it that way.
Do you think that if there's questions from the public, we address them now so that
Sure.
in the, you know, the next hearing, we kind of know what.
Sure, so then we know it's traffic.
Are there any questions from the public? Please name and.
Laura Sweet, 50 Milford Street, right across the street from this location. I wanted to know what were the hours of operation, I know they're changing that, so what was the start and the end time?
We haven't determined the exact hours at this point. We don't think that the end time will change. We would have an earlier start time, it would be, instead of 4:30, I think likely at 1:00 PM. We haven't determined that, but we'll by the next quarter.
And what's the, at the end time of the end of the night?
I don't remember what the original condition was.
Well, you have to go by your alcohol license, I believe, unless you stay open without alcohol.
No, we're not going to stay open without alcohol.
So the alcohol license, I believe, is 1 o'clock in the middle?
Do I need that too?
Yeah, I believe it, I believe it's 1 o'clock every night, and then you can ask for, I think we've granted to businesses, I'd have to go back and look, 2 o'clock on Friday and Saturday. I think, I don't hold me that, it was wild going.
I want to thank you for doing the traffic study because, yes, traffic has changed in the last 10 years. There's a lot of different businesses there, the pot shops that go right next door. I know that doesn't impact them on their study because it's not there yet, but it will make it different people coming and going. Often, it's hard to just get out of my driveway. Doesn't matter what time of day it is, hard to get into my driveway, doesn't matter what time of day it is. Okay, tell you how many times it's been two accidents, right, right in front of their business and my business, just because you belong south, you belong. I thought the planning board had said there might be a change in the location of where your driver was going to be. My, I imagine, is it going to stay the same?
Stay the same.
It is? Okay.
There were interior changes. There was an expansion, for example, fire trucks on the right side.
And all the other boards that you met with prior to this one, you talked about the new size of your building and the dimensions and everything.
So this is the site plans Mr. McGinn provided, and they were also made all those years.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, so we need to select a date, right?
With two months of that.
Let's see.
What is the special? Number?
It's the week after Thanksgiving.
That's a, so the third, wait, let's see, the 38th?
We have a meeting in December 1st. So we could post for, you know, realistically. We have to have the agenda for the previous week done, basically the 24th.
I'll be losing the house.
Right, and so if we have the meeting on Wednesday the 1st, then whatever comes in by Monday, we can make it on our agenda for Thursday.
That's fine. So we'll say December 1st, start the, 6:30?
December 1st, 6:30? That's fine, if we get it done earlier, then we can actually lose Newman, we can move it forward.
Accept the motion. I'm moved to continue the public hearing for Field Time Entertainment LLC, George Fernari, according to Milford Street, that's going to 6:06 to November, sorry, December 1st, 2021, 6:30.
I'll say.
Aye.
Cut. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay. I'm going to start on this number. Come on. Are you ready?
Yeah.
So last week, or last week, you know, we talked about following, speaking of, on various fields around town property, farming, rural property, and cleanup, numerous cleanup that you've done around the town buildings. And since that time, we've started to speak down to each other about some of the work that people are doing. And so it's clear that you've spoken with town officials about what they're doing.
Yeah, in fact, last week, we spoke with Amazara, Peter, I think it was Frank.
Yeah.
Yes.
On the ladies' name.
Correct.
And so I guess it's still a little more clear to me of what has been happening there. And so I don't know what we want to do because my mindset has changed on what we had been addressing last time versus now. Because if Rick has spoken with Alan about doing some of that maintenance work around the buildings, keep it looking nice, I don't really mind that, but what we do need to be aware of is are there certain things we want to deal with in terms of liability? That was the big question, so.
Yeah, I spoke to Peter as well. I mean, I spoke with Tish, I spoke with Peter, I spoke, I spoke with you, I guess. And I can speak with Alan about it. Look, whatever makes everybody's life easier, it was, it started more of a neighbor complaint than anything else. It kind of grew to where it's at now. Anybody that's helping out, I'm okay with it, but again, I just don't. We have like four neighbor complaints going on right now. I got to tell you, it's the most painful thing to deal with up here. Because, I mean, just get along with your neighbors, it's not like I said.
Well, and I.
You know, but if you're like, we're going to help out with Tom, I don't mean, don't move the stakes. If you move them, I don't know if you did it, you didn't, if they said that you didn't, don't move them.
Do you want to address that for just a quick second?
Yeah, correct.
Because the paper wrote unflattering article after the last meeting, everyone's here in order to give a dissent on what's happening. But when I was talking to, I forget, because I've talked to some people, they did a video. In the room, there's a pin. And my understanding was the pin was the landmark. So if you're looking at the pin, the stake was over here. So what I had to do is, I pulled up the stake to mow all that area because I planted trees in front.
Yeah.
I put the stake back according to the pin. But what I didn't know was the pin was a reference mark for the surveyors.
Yeah.
So when the surveyor came out, he found that I was six inches off from where I was. So I just wanted to address that because I've been called a land stealer. And I'm sitting there going, how can I stand six inches of land? And, you know, not doing anything.
But that's where these things get to, is what I'm saying, right? Okay, that's kind of where I'm getting at, is when it gets to this point, tempers flare, foolish things are said, except, you know, this is my opinion. Yeah, I mean, as long as everybody's okay with, I'm definitely okay with, as long as everybody's happy at the end of the day is all I care about, right? Because again, it's just not something, unfortunately, we're the stock of this, but it's going to be one of the most frustrating things, doing this job, so.
And to me, it's just grass, I don't care. If you guys tell me not to, I don't care.
Not sure. Look, Peter said you're helping him out a bit on the way that he has to loop the, when hunting it in. Alan's happy because we're getting some of the building, didn't care. You know, I'm okay with it, just, you know, time, you know, I don't know.
And I'd like to say something to Alan and the guys up there. They do a very, like we just heard his comment today about COVID and my home. And that's one of the reasons why I did that, because I have a great respect for Alan. And he's helped me out in the past, and he's been very respectful, you know, up until, yes, our relationship. And I felt I wanted to give back, and that's why I get that.
I appreciate that, okay, definitely, anybody who wants to help a lot too. If there's any liability issues, we're going to work out, and then there's a piece of paper you got to sign that you're going to cut the grass a little bit, let's just do it, just so that, I mean, it's weird. To me, it's weird, I don't have legal deal with it, because what does it matter if you're driving your lawnmower or I'm walking on the grass, so what the heck's the difference?
One thing I just want to say is that, you know.
Yep, if we have, oh, Anne has her hand up too.
Yeah, we'll get to Anne in a second after Cindy, but, you know, you say it's okay, what's happening at this point? But like, if for some reason, you know, the fields aren't getting hayed, we don't want you driving your tractor or your lawnmower and mowing the whole field, you know, like, it's to a certain point, and so Cindy, do you want?
Yeah, I'm not one that people are going to want to kill. I appreciate your efforts, and I think the board appreciates everyone's efforts here. But from my perspective, I would like to see some sort of agreement in place with you and the town that specifies what is the town wants done, where is the town wants done. Liability concerns need to be addressed, and with all due respect, I think it should also be run by insurance. Just to make sure that all these things, I'm not saying it can't be done, but I think it's important to protect everybody, that we spell out exactly what's being done, we have all the liability provisions in place, so hopefully it goes in the drawers in place and moves.
So I remember, I want to say four years ago, we did, wasn't a hold harmless agreement, but we did for people who are volunteering to weed the pond.
No, no, oh, well, probably up in the, up in the, up.
And the pond.
And what about the islands?
There's that, there's also an agreement for land stewards who are kind of overseeing a lot of properties and kind of.
Right, so there must be something that we can put into, we've done it in the past, we have a practice.
Yeah. Let me just get to Anne's question, and then we'll, Anne, go ahead.
Hi, yeah, we do have a forum for the volunteer land stewards, and I had asked Rick if he wanted to be one at one point, so that's a possibility. But I just wanted to clarify that around the border of. So that's a possibility, but I just wanted to clarify that around the border of his property, the land use committee doesn't want him cutting in the hayfield. Like, if Alan wants him cutting around the barns, that's fine, but just not around the, over his border.
Well, can I ask why?
Because Peters hang it, and we're having other issues with other residents that are mowing into open space areas, and so we just want it to be clean cut, that, you know, when you're next to town property, you, you stay on your property. The, the other situation is a little bit more different because he's helping around the barns and whatnot. But Alan is hanging the field, and he'd like to continue hanging it, all, but, all of it.
Well, I guess that's another thought, is there's no fence between town's property and your property, so can Peter just hay closer and onto your lawn a little bit so that?
Sure, if he fills out the paperwork. I mean, come on, this is ridiculous. We're talking about a, a, a stretch of grass that, that's a, a, a road too deep, and when I talked to Peter the other day, he, he said he, he didn't mind, but what?
Um, can I say something?
That's completely nonsense.
Peter said, can I say something? Oh, Peter Hawks said that he can get right up to the border and cut it, the hay, so I asked him to do that. So Rick doesn't need to mow on the other side.
Problem solved. Just need something for around the buildings.
There we go.
We still think we need to put some kind of other. Posts or anything up there, or we just gonna leave it?
No.
I don't think we should leave it the way I.
Yes. I don't think this, we don't want a bunch of permanent posts.
We did, Amazara and us, we had discussed possibly putting like the cement post in, but they're low to the ground, so the mower can go over it, but it, but it marks the land. And I told her, I said, I would be more than happy to, I got the whole payment of that, if that's something you guys want to do, because it, it, it doesn't bother me to do that. But there's always my mower people around and everything else, you know, or, 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 that's fine.
I mean, again, like I said, how far over you gotta go with that mower?
Plus Peter, who Peter's handing, he's gonna hay right up against it. But it's up to you guys, I'll do whatever you guys want. And we don't, you're good on this side, you guys can get ahold of me, you know.
I think we're good on this topic, right, you want? Thank you. No, we're not going down. Thank you.
Have a good night, you guys, thank you.
No, we're not, we're moving on now, thank you.
Can I have an opportunity to speak?
Uh, we're, we're actually gonna move on from this topic.
Really? Why, why wouldn't someone get an opportunity to speak? I have something important to share.
Well, was it something new from the last time?
No, this is something different.
In relation to the mow?
In relation to mowing around the town buildings. And in relation to the fact that he was operating a brush hog directly beneath. A major electrical transformer that gives power not only to the police dispatch antenna, but also to a larger government antenna further down the hill. And what if he were to accidentally damage the pole or the wires?
Okay, so he has.
You were.
Excuse me, highway surveyor has, has, would normally be doing that work if he had the appropriate staff levels, but we unfortunately just don't. So Rick has been in communication with town officials, and they've identified that it's okay to do this work.
Uninsured?
And we're addressing that part, so. That's where we're at.
While I trust the selectmen of this town will look out for the town's best interest for further lawsuits.
Yes, and that's what we're doing tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, discuss personnel policy. And tell us the issue. For some time, we've been talking about updating personnel policy, there have been things in the works, and COVID happened, and that kind of, you know, loss and translation. And, you know, recently, it's come to an end, and really should also have a clear telework policy in this day and age. And so, Kim, I know you've, you do a smart on that, and if you want to talk.
Sure, so a little bit of the timeline is, in twenty eighteen, end of twenty eighteen, we received a grant. That we were able to use, that we, five thousand dollars for the, to work with the Collins Center to get an updated personnel policy and handbook. That grant provided us with the opportunity to work with, for them to give us a, basically, a carbon copy set of the most updated policies that were around, and then to work with an intern. Over a certain amount of time in order for the completion of the project. Our previous benefits coordinator was working with that intern through twenty nineteen, they were in the final stages of comparing, making sure that what the Collins Center had provided that was the most updated, how that. Corresponded with what we had existing, basically, this is what the change would be, so that's sort of like a quick summary, and then we had COVID. So in, as you know, we have a new HR person starting in October, and certainly will be one of the top priorities for that person. We are eighty percent there.
Yeah, I mean, this is like, it should be ready to go.
Right, we, I mean, we were down to the, basically, just going through the old policy line by line, and making sure we hadn't missed anything at the rate of the end. So it should, I mean, I would expect it. I mean, I don't wanna put any expectations on the new person that's not even on the door yet, but I would expect it soon, no pressure.
Any personnel policy that can evolve the salary policy?
Yeah, we should, I agree with Mark, we absolutely, certainly, if anything, COVID has taught us the last two years, that we have the ability to work remotely, and we should certainly have some rules around that. You know, as the staff continues to grow, and sort of the, the, the way we become efficient, and we have appointments remotely, I mean, we should have some more parameters around it. I mean, it's very common, and I assume this way that we work isn't going to change in the future, this is the future, and so we.
You can see some sort of hybrid model of what we're kind of, what we're used to, to kind of doing at these meetings.
Yeah, right.
The convenience for.
The benefits.
The patients alone.
Right.
Being able to Teams in or Zoom in or whatever, maybe, then meeting with someone who's experienced.
Yeah, to be able to, I mean, I have, as you know, this past month, every Wednesday, I have been conducting Zoom interviews nonstop with candidates. And having panels, you know, to find these candidates that we've been hiring, and I mean, that is something that would have taken a whole, you know, like, get them all to come here on a certain day, coordinate, all I had to do, I mean, with technology is invite them along.
Can't wait to hear his thoughts.
Yeah, I mean, move them over to the, I mean, it was, it, I mean, it was, it was tricky learning the system, you know, but. I'm, I've come around to it, but, I mean, I really think it did save, we had, with four active hires at the same amount of time that I was handling by myself in a month, and I, I think it's streamlined the process. So I, I think we should, I think we should have a policy, and I think it should be incorporated into the personnel policy.
Great. Now, I gave them the first thing that our new HR director is working.
Officer, law director.
Excuse me.
As soon as she comes in and learns our basic systems, and then yes, she certainly is capable.
Thank you. That is trust.
I, I agree, I mean, before Tanya had left, she and I had set up a series of dates to, to do updates on it, so. It's one of our goals.
I mean, I'd be happy to just get the telework part, you know, group, that board, before even a full new person. I really think that's.
Okay, well, I'll have her look at it first. Considering she will be teleworking some of the time, right?
Perfect example of why.
Yes.
That's still toward us, to delineate what is allowed and what's not, does not, needs to be.
Defined, defined, okay.
If you guys can draft.
No, we already handed that.
They're close tomorrow.
Oh, oh, you, oh, sorry, you have.
Yes, I have.
Oh, sorry.
Laura has.
Really rough.
Put together, don't, I'm sorry.
What the heck, Laura?
I know, huh?
Laura's put together every email that came in.
It's brought.
We can't, we cannot add after tonight, and we can remove, so they don't have to be defined, they're just placeholders.
Right.
So speak now or forever hold your peace.
It doesn't close until tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow at four o'clock.
Send, send the word.
So we can add, and I did send a.
Yep.
Reminder.
Okay, so bills of a prior year, Article Two is, we haven't done this in a couple years, every three years, we have a big chart right there with transfers into salary lines for the contracts we've negotiated, that's Article Two. Article Three, stabilization, Article Four, CapEx, Article Five, OTEB, Article Six, these substance abuse, these are all basically consent calendar. This one is the new revolving account for cruisers.
Was that six or seven?
Seven, right.
Yep.
So what, what are you explaining on the little?
No, eight.
What's that?
Seven and eight, right, together.
They're the same, right, you have to settle limit, and you have to establish the account, and then settle, um, my understanding, let me try this before I. So when there are details, in the. And no, I wanted, I wanted to know that, I wanted to know that I listen when he tells me that, when there are details, often, people request a cruiser, and there's no additional charge for having that cruiser. And there's a, you know, a maintenance cost associated with the wear and tear for the cruiser, so we'd like to be able to dedicate, first, charge a fee to those persons for the cruiser, and then take that money and dedicate it to a cruiser maintenance account. Pretty sure you're pulling this on vacation, just so you know.
Well, separated, different.
Is this part, see, the town will both catch for ten way, the ninety-six hundred free cash to highway construction?
No, that doesn't belong there, I don't know what that is, that, actually, that's the radio money, I think, but we moved that to another article. Yeah.
A boo-boo, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, it was draft.
Right, rough.
It's rough.
Article nine, CPA, that's.
Do we do the buckets in the fall?
Yes. We did last.
Oh, that's why, I'm confused, because we did.
You did.
Okay.
Ten.
These are from Alan, impose a local excise tax option.
What taxes?
The kind of.
Oh, this is.
No, it's a lodging, hotel tax.
Did they have a whole, bed and breakfast, short term rentals, yeah.
Every MB tax. Alan has received her official certification as a town clerk, and so we provide a stipend of a thousand dollars on certification. Alan would also like to be able to change the way we distributed the warrant, you may recall, we went over this seven years ago, when Diane was still here, and we actually got shot down on the floor for this one. So hoping that technology is come around, and people will, but yeah, we got shot down. Yeah.
I mean, were you asked maybe? No.
What is that?
Oh, no, last night's meeting, no, last night's meeting, there was a question that came up about. Could we distribute it, if we had more, we had a different way to distribute it, could we handle the time on the, like, when we open and close the warrant? Are we closing the warrant based upon distribution?
Sometimes for printing, but no, the deadlines for closing the warrant is, what, six weeks before the day?
Seven weeks.
That's, so.
Oh, before the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, sometimes we get, we get rushed, we, because of the print schedule.
Right.
I have no idea, I understand, I understand, thank you.
All right.
So like, can I just, just one second, so Article ten, which is the tax, we have to be the ones to support that, like, um?
It's probably a bio law, right?
I have no idea, that's a secondary question.
It's, it's accepted provisions.
I mean, I don't know, if, without going through your bio laws, line by line, of appointment, that it has to be sponsored.
I just.
If that's your question.
Okay, we don't, but I, that's.
I wasn't.
We have to accept it, but like, what I'm saying is, like, if Alan is asking to put it on, like, I don't know if I, and I'm not sure that, either, I don't know your opinions, but like, I don't wanna be the one to make the motion, like.
I know what you're saying, you know?
The town has to vote to accept the provisions, the statute, but I don't think, I'm unaware of, I'm, the selectman has to be responsible.
Well, the question, I mean, my, my question to you is, what is the actual, what is, where are we gonna see the revenue? You know what I mean?
Yeah, it's significant.
Probably.
Well, we should probably leave it on.
Yeah.
And see.
But I won't get it, but I think it's a good point, like you said, it can take a while.
Yeah.
Right.
But five.
Yeah.
Thirteen.
I think Alan, I think she talked about this last time, we need an additional present.
Here's the. Oh, that's.
The highway.
Okay.
So is this ninety-six hundred, is this the fire alarm radio?
No, 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 that is an email I got from Alan today. From free cash to highway, that is not anything.
Is that the roof, roof maybe?
That's all that he, Darlene said, and that's all.
A transfer from free cash to highway construction and maintenance account, he wants more money put into his budget in November.
And the, exactly what I put is exactly what was sent to me.
There's a hole in the roof for the ping, no water. So this, I mean, it might not be.
I'd like to have some detail.
Well, yeah, I mean, if we're moving, but, yeah, we can get.
I mean, because that amount of money is something that, if it was an emergency, we wouldn't even be on here, but.
He may have, is this something to do with the radios, I mean, the security?
No, we have that, that's different, yeah.
So leave it in.
Okay.
Yeah, alignment, flagger.
I don't know, is this, is this Joey's thing?
Yes, okay, yes.
Now, she explained that to me today, that there is no formal process to set up a payment plan for somebody who's, their parents are in fact, and she'd like to do this.
That's a good idea, yes.
She wants us to accept a master in the law, which lays it out, which is the problem that she's having, is that people who were in agreeers, who take big percentages, will call her, and they'll make an agreement, and they just don't, they don't follow through. And she has no teeth to make it before, she said, this law, this master in the law that's on the books, if we both accept it.
Sounds right.
Okay, all right, well.
Raise your hand, Joey, if that's incorrect. You're good, Mike, good.
Does Trish have another question, or was that from before?
I think that's from before.
Okay.
Uh, sixteen is EPA.
This is for historical contracts that would. From the, sort of, side, some of them just need, it was much more bad.
Right, because you're on the store?
No, I'm on that.
CPC.
CPC, yeah, from here.
And then eighteen is for. And.
For the, what is this for?
Purpose change.
This is the affordable housing down next to the senior center that failed last time.
So, yeah, but, so this is for, so this is to take, the water gets tricky if we do, if you have continuous property around. So if the town owns this while we build the well, we have to build a trigger plant, because it can accommodate so many of the town parcels that continue, so this will break this off. When we set, the, the well will go with the developer of the affordable housing. That way, if there's another town, we don't have to.
I have a, I, I believe this, but this is brand new information from a number of times that we've heard about this project, is this, is this a new development?
No. No, this isn't a.
Maybe it's.
You're saying this well that we're gonna talk about putting back over here?
So maybe this is because we've determined that the well can't be far further away, and so now, because it's gonna move back to a different location, this goes into effect, that would make sense. That would make sense.
Don't hold me to that, but that's.
Because we were considering putting it up behind the neighborhood, and then that was, the neighborhood said, we don't like this, there could be an access road back there, and we don't like that, and so we probably.
No, there's a subdivision.
At the point.
No, that's the whole piece of it, it's not gonna have access to that. Because we're gonna have the older space, I mean, I'm sure that, like, Bill McKenna could explain us where they're gonna make, but there's, I don't think he's on right now.
No.
So there's a.
Did he, did he come to?
Yes, they have.
Okay, good, yeah, all right, so anyway, we're leaving it on, so what?
It's a little.
We got this stuff too, I'm leaving it out again.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, we'll talk about.
Nineteen is North Ave.
What is that?
That's the one that failed.
Oh, yeah, for, for, uh, behind.
Little more description in that.
We will eventually.
No, it's a box.
I don't have the article nineteen north.
We're gonna send it out like this.
Oh, I know you've got it, like, it's getting short and sweet.
We're gonna abbreviate, going by, uh, C, D, and A.
But we're doing exactly the same as before.
The town hall campus one.
So in case there's something needed, we're gonna go out to bid for the demo, and we're gonna go out to bid for the painting. We have the well going on, so I'm putting a place.
What about all the fancy stuffy?
Well, that too, so I'm putting a placeholder on, because I wanna get, we're gonna put the bids out for those two.
Brother, that's fancy.
Gonna put the bids out for these two in October, and see what that's at, and so we have a chance by then if we need more money to.
I think Anne was working on some more grant pieces.
Yeah, we have, we have funding for this, but I mean.
And Mark talked about something else, who did the wire?
We got a lot, and well, we've been sitting on the. There's, we've been sitting on the money from the Complete Streets grant that we got many years ago to finish this campus with. Plus, we have the police station money that came back from that project, plus we have the money from the Inman Hill Road sale, plus we have the grant. Sounds like a lot, but paving costs a lot of money and demo, so.
I just, I can't, I don't see it in my email feed now, but I thought.
When done correctly.
We sent something about having an article to appropriate additional money, because the the estimate came in higher from the DOR, she certified it.
So usually, we, we raise and appropriate, and it captures that additional money, but check.
I'm not, I heard anyone said.
The only one I remember saying was today. No, that one was stabilization and capital.
Oh, this was a couple weeks ago.
Right.
Right, yeah, we go, so it was a little more money, yeah, yeah, right, I thought it was what it said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that wasn't, that wasn't requested.
No, 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 that was just kind of.
I thought she said.
Well, the request is for town meeting, because basically, the board has to decide whether or not they wanna cap, capture and use that excess levy. And it's always.
We've chosen not to.
In the past, we've left it and not taxed and taken the entire, it's a.
What was the number, seventy to seventy-five?
The issue is, if you don't put it on, you can't.
No, it's not an article.
It isn't, so we just, in other words, we can just pick the number. Raise it, I thought, well, we have to have, we have to have an article placed to raise it appropriate though.
I don't remember, it's been so long since we did this, it was probably three years ago, but what I do remember is that we have to raise and appropriate and allocate it. I don't remember if it was a, like, a startup article.
I remember talking.
We'll find out.
We'll just put a placeholder.
That's all.
So it's just at the top, if it's anywhere, it's right up there where the budget one's on.
All right, so we're just gonna call it twenty-four right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Extra levy, right, don't put anything more than extra levy on. That's how we're.
It's excess, like, what did Rich use to call it? Created some extra word that we want, something, anyway, his own terminology. Demolition by law, that's you wanting, right? You've been working with them.
So they have a meeting, yeah, just hoping there's a placeholder, ideally, I've met with, I'm actually, I remember Cindy, I know John Erickson, and I'm meeting with Lynn Thursday, I believe, for her and I to review that.
Back.
Together, they have a meeting set for October fourth, I'm not sure, the only other day, I'll attend that as well.
Well, yes, we're.
Now, everybody's gonna.
Okay, so it's, I mean, it's many long meetings each.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we do have some, I have in that, hopefully, we'll, and I would assume that once I finish talking with them that they'll go to Cindy next to just go over any legal, like, stuff that's in. So, you know, one, Cindy and I found, it's actually been there the whole time, seemed a little like, well, this doesn't seem right. So it'll be our discussion, and not, no, for discussion for them and I, but my, for Cindy to explain it better to me, just on the team. But for the changes that they had, we definitely got some good stuff.
Great.
Okay. Oh, well, twenty-three, fire alarm stuff, it's not just Alan, it's just building too.
And five, five, two. Yeah, the cell dial was a way for all of the. It was actually looking for, and I did, I thought that I could be personally, I worked with another company, and a bunch of, my clients have fire alarms, and they're aware. Everybody set up.
So that isn't a hard one, it's just, some regards to that is.
I mean, I thought, I didn't even, was it?
No, I'm just gonna quit.
Okay, move ten to executive section, the master number law, the EPA section twenty-one, purposes free, special, you can collect your vantage. Money, mortgage, two, and. Three max positions, please, you need ethics in your local. Touchdown, we can definitely, maybe definitely a bargain, we will reconvene, and we do it here. Roll call.
Roll call. Oh, for executive section.
Roll call.
No, we didn't hear a second.
Second.
All right.
Tell you what, roll call. Reconvening went to a dr, right?
Yep, he's right.